Hello, can anyone hear me?
There you go, I can.
Thank you, I can hear now and the video still needs to be turned on for for the council chambers. There we go, thanks.
Okay. Okay. I will now close the planning commission meeting and open the public hearing. On this. What are we calling this, Tracy?
For the Housing Strategy Projects Policy and Code Amendments.
Okay, that's what I just said. Does any member of the commission wish to abstain or declare ex parte contact? Not, okay. The commission is, will now hear the staff report on this proposal.
Thank you, that will be coming from me and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. Whoever's doing the Zoom, can you enable me to screen share or make make me a co-host on the planning staff? Participant, there we go, okay. The the one that's the one where I'm named planning staff, that's the one where I need to screen share from. Not the one where my audio is coming from, sorry. Oh, I can make myself a host? Um, for some reason. I cannot. Well, Alan, are you able to um, share the slides?
Yeah, I can share the slides.
Okay, that will work. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Perfect, okay. Alrighty, so um, this is the first public hearing for ordinance 2022-010. Proposing amendments to the Development Code and Comprehensive Plan. Those amendments are based on findings and recommendations from the Housing Needs Analysis and Strategy Project. Before I get too far, please um, interrupt me and let me know if uh, if I am too quiet or if you missed something that I said. I am not sure how good my service is, so. Um, so, uh, the Planning Commission's job tonight will be to determine whether these proposed amendments satisfy the approval criteria for Development Code and Comprehensive Plan amendments. Um, and then you will issue a recommendation to the city council. They will hold their public hearing on this proposal on Monday, September 26th in the council chambers, beginning at 6:30 PM that night. Um, so a little bit of an agenda for tonight, first, we staff are gonna present a very basic overview of um, how the ordinance satisfies the approval criteria that need to be met in order to approve these types of amendments, so amendments to the Development Code and amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. And then the project consultants are gonna go into some greater detail on the content of those amendments. After that, we will um, take questions from the Planning Commission about the project or what's being proposed, um, or any of the approval criteria. And then uh, members of the public will have an opportunity to provide their testimony for the Planning Commission to consider. And the commission will uh, after that, decide whether they want to recommend any changes to the proposal before it goes to the city council. Next slide, please, thank you. Before we jump in, I just wanna make sure everyone is oriented with the packet materials for these amendments and hopefully you have them handy. Is everyone in person tonight? Looks like it. So that's great. Um, so there are eight items total. You have one staff report and then seven exhibits, uh, plus the two extra letters that I think got printed out today, too. The three that are shown in bold on the screen here, these are the actual documents that are proposed to be adopted. So that includes the ordinance itself and then the or the two attachments to the ordinance, which are the Comp Plan Amendments, I'm gonna be abbreviating Comprehensive Plan as Comp Plan. Um, so Comp Plan Amendments are Exhibit One of the ordinance, um, Exhibit Two of the report. I apologize for that being confusing. And then the second um, exhibit of the ordinance are the Title 16 amendments. This is also um, just another way to say Development Code Amendments. The last four exhibits here, um, these are reports from that Housing Strategy Project, the Housing Needs Analysis and Strategy Project. Um, so that includes the Housing Strategies Report in Exhibit Four. That report has an appendix in Exhibit Five showing some maps for um, optional rezoning, voluntary rezoning. Um, and just to be clear, um, this ordinance does not include any proposed rezoning of specific properties. We can go into more detail on that later. There's also last year's Housing Needs Report, also known as the Housing Needs Analysis or HNA. And then lastly, there's the Buildable Lands Inventory that was conducted as part of the HNA. Um, something that's not shown on that last slide are Exhibits Number Eight and Nine. These are two pieces of testimony, we received letters of support from um, some from a local organization called Totos Juntos and also a letter of support from a um, local regional affordable housing developer, uh, green light development. And so those were, I believe, printed out and included tonight as well, and they're included in the record. Next slide, please, thanks. Okay, so. The um, amendments that are proposed in Ordinance 2022-010 are summarized in Part Two of the Staff Report, which um, in the Staff Report, Part Two begins on page seven of that document. And the consultant team, like I said, they're gonna go into some greater detail on the content of those amendments, but for the purpose of reviewing the approval criteria, I'm just gonna give a high-level description of them. There are two city documents, like I said, that we're proposing to amend. That's the Comp Plan, specifically Chapter Eight, which pertains to housing, and then the Development Code, which is also known as Title 16 of the Estacada Municipal Code. You'll you will see that written as EMC for short. The Comprehensive Plan Amendments will, first of all, update the Existing Conditions Section of um, of the plan of that chapter to document the findings from last year's Housing Needs Analysis. And I will also note that um, it also documents the fact that the City Council recognizes the numbers that were used in that analysis were underestimating the current population and probably underprojecting the growth rate that we will see for the next 20 years. Um, and so we conducted, they conducted an alternate projection that begins on page thirty-two of the Housing Needs Report, which is Exhibit Number Six. Um, and that alternate projection provides what we think is a much more likely projection of the city's growth. So all of that is gonna be captured in the updated Existing Conditions Section of Chapter Eight. The Comp Plan Amendments are also going to update the goal statement and the objectives, um, as well as the Policies and Implementation Section in order to, um, as you see up here on the screen, promote a variety of housing types and prices that meet the needs that we are seeing now and in the future. Encourage a wider range of rental and ownership opportunities through middle housing. Middle housing, we'll go into a little more detail about this, too, but um, middle housing are things like duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, common wall dwellings, cottage clusters. Some people consider accessory dwelling units middle housing, too. Um, so basically, housing types that are between single-family and multifamily. Uh, it will uh, be updated to preserve residential areas for housing and preserve existing housing stock, support partnerships with nonprofit developers, and in core encourage voluntary upzoning of low or medium density properties, only when appropriate and only when the property owner wants to rezone. Next slide, please, thank you. So those are the Comp Plan Amendments, the Development Code Amendments affect thirteen different chapters of Title 16. These are all listed here. On the screen, they're also on page one of the Staff Report. And um, these amendments can be summarized as falling into seven functional categories. So these are basically the objectives that the amendments aim to accomplish. So they will promote accessory dwelling units, they will facilitate middle housing and other lower-cost housing types. They will reduce unnecessary barriers to the development of housing. They will increase allowed density in existing zones. They will establish minimum density requirements in certain zones. They will adjust off-street parking requirements and they will facilitate the development of non-conforming lots. So, um, as I mentioned, our consultant team is gonna go into more detail on the content of those plan and code amendments. But now that you have a very basic, high-level idea of what the ordinance is proposing, we can go ahead and consider the approval criteria which apply to these amendments. Um, so the state of Oregon requires all cities to adopt a comprehensive plan that complies with fourteen statewide planning goals. There are a total of nineteen statewide planning goals, but the last four of them, four or five, yeah, fifteen through nineteen are relate to um, the Willamette River and coastal beach land, you know, the last four don't relate to the city. Um, so fourteen statewide planning goals that we need to address. Um, and so these approval criteria from the state are addressed in detail in Part Three of the Staff Report. And they sort of naturally align very closely with the goals or chapters of our own comprehensive plan. Uh, and and those chapters establish um, basically the city's policy approval criteria, which apply to um, code or Comp Plan Amendments. Um, and those are reviewed in Part Four of the Staff Report, beginning on page twenty. So, um, since we are proposing amendments to the Comp Plan and the Development Code, we need to make sure that those changes are consistent with um, the statewide planning goals and our own comprehensive plan policies that relate to the amendments. Um, there are also regulations in our Development Code that we need to make sure to follow and we will look at those after the goals. So the first five statewide planning goals track pretty closely with the first five Comp Plan Goals. Goal One requires the city to provide opportunity for public involvement in the planning process. That includes noticing requirements and public hearings with the Planning Commission and the City Council, uh, like the one we're having right now. Um, so not only have we met those minimum requirements, but this project also used multiple different community engagement methods to gather public input throughout the process, which informed the development of the proposed amendments. So we've gone above and beyond the minimum there. Um, and then the second statewide goal requires cities to adopt a comprehensive plan. While the second Comp Plan Goal um, requires us to coordinate with relevant agencies. So since we're amending the Comp Plan and the Development Code, we had to notify the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, that's DLCD, in order to give that agency um, an opportunity to review and comment on these proposed amendments. Um, and then the next several goals are really only tangentially related to these amendments. They are described in the Staff Report nonetheless. Those are related to agricultural lands, forest lands, um, natural resources and open spaces. Same goes for, yeah, these next couple, recreation, environmental quality, natural hazards and economic development. All of these are reviewed in the Staff Report, um, but really only tangentially relate to this proposal. So we're not gonna go into great detail here unless people have specific questions. All right, so goal statewide planning goal ten and Comprehensive Plan Goal or Chapter Eight. Uh, these are the goals that relate to housing, so obviously very directly apply to this proposal. So broadly, Goal Ten requires the city to adopt a plan that addresses how its housing needs are gonna be met over the next twenty-year period. So this ordinance would amend Chapter Eight of our Comprehensive Plan, addressing housing-related findings and policies to incorporate the more current housing needs information from the 2021 HNA and to address those existing and projected needs. Uh, Goal Ten also requires the cities to use very specific methods when we're conducting our housing needs analysis. So this analysis was done um, according to those state requirements and the ordinance is proposing to update Chapter Eight of our Comp Plan with those findings to provide more recent recent documentation on um, things like demographics, housing stock, current and future housing needs, housing cost and affordability. It compares land supply and housing demand. Um, and then it also provides that additional growth forecast, because like I said, we wanted to recognize that the the population estimates and projection methods that the state requires us to use are probably lower than what we're actually gonna see based on um, the acceleration in growth that we've been seeing over the past, you know, just past five years or so. So, um, so that Housing Needs Analysis was the first part of this project. The second part was the Housing Strategy Component. Um, and that was to identify options for meeting the needs that were identified. The Housing Strategy Report, this is Exhibit Not, uh, sorry, Exhibit Four uh, of your packet and that documents how the various elements that are listed here on the screen were incorporated in order to develop the list or the um, it's, you can think of it like a toolkit of strategies that the city could use in order to meet its housing needs and goals. That Housing Strategies Report includes a total of nineteen potential strategies, some of which, a couple of which were not highly recommended, such as um, like a UGB, Urban Growth Boundary Expansion, or the Construction Excise Tax, those were not highly recommended. Some of which might have been highly recommended, but they could either couldn't be accomplished by the city alone or they can't be accomplished by amending the Comp Plan or Development Code, so they would be a different project. Um, so the only strategies that this ordinance is intending to address are the nine Policy and Development Code Strategies. To address those needs that were identified in the HNA. Those are listed on page four of the Staff Report and we can go into more detail on that. Um, so with all of this in consideration, we find that yes, the proposed amendments in this ordinance do indeed comply with statewide planning goal ten. The remaining several goals, once again, are only tangentially related. Just putting them on the screen for posterity, I guess, um, only tangentially related to this proposal. The Staff Report, like I said, does describe those kind of minor relationships there, but we're not gonna go into them unless there are uh, questions about that. And then lastly, um, I apologize for how small this text is. The Development Code establishes criteria that's on the screen, criteria for amending itself, basically. Um, and so those criteria include authorization to initiate amendments. Only the Planning Commission or the City Council may initiate an amendment. Um, and indeed, the City Council will be the um, the body that decides whether or not to adopt these amendments. Amendment procedure is laid out in this chapter. Findings are required to be made. Staff will make sure that those findings are captured and um, published and signed. Um, and then limitation um, basically relates to um, property owner-specific requests, which is, which does not apply um, in this case. So, um, therefore not applicable. So all of those Development Code requirements are either already met and the procedure is being followed or don't apply. So, um, as is described in much greater detail in the Staff Report, we have established that all of the approval criteria that apply to this proposal are met. The next segment of um, the presentation is gonna switch over to the consultant team so that they can talk about um, basically the fun parts. And what we're really all here to discuss, which is the content of the proposed Comp Plan and Code Amendments and um, how those amendments accomplish the recommended strategies that resulted from the Housing Needs Analysis and Strategies Project. So I would like to propose that we wait to to take questions from the Planning Commission until after the consultant's presentation. It's possible that they will answer your questions in the presentation. And just to make sure that we're, yeah, getting through this uh, in a timely manner. Um, so if you have questions um, that can wait until after their presentations, please um, jot them down if you can and then we'll wanna make sure to get to them after. If there are any pressing questions, especially if there's something that I said um, that you need clarification on in order to be able to move forward, by all means, uh, let me know. Otherwise, I'm gonna hand it over to Matt Hasty and Kate Rogers with MIG.
All right, can everybody hear me okay? Excellent, so I'm Matt Hasty, um, as Taylor said, with a consulting firm called MIG. And we've been working with the city for the last little year, over a year um, on this project. And as Taylor described, there's been sort of a number of moving parts. Um, so we'll talk in a little more detail about some of the content of what's being proposed to be adopted and the rationale particularly behind some of the Development Code Amendments. Um, I'm gonna cover the first part and talk um, just a little bit more about some of the background work in the Housing Needs Analysis and what's called the Buildable Lands Inventory and the comparison of those two things. And then I'll say a little bit more about the proposed amendments to Comprehensive Plan Policies related to housing. And then Kate, um, will do the hard part, she'll talk about the Development Code Amendments piece. Um, and then we'll be happy to take questions from y'all um, on what we've talked about or that some of what Taylor presented. I may end up repeating some of what Taylor said, I'll try not to do too much of that. But hopefully I'll, I'll not, yeah, do too much of that, so, yeah, let's go ahead. So again, we'll give an overview, Taylor already gave an overview of the project, I'll say a little bit more. And I've already covered this, um, so yeah, go to the next one. So this is just a graphic that describes the process that we went through. There are sort of two sides of that Housing Needs Analysis, there's the projected need side, how much housing are you expected to need in this community over the next twenty years? How much land does that equate to in terms of land that would be zoned for housing, for different types of housing? And then how much land is there within the city? Um, and this is all looking at land within the entire urban growth boundary, not just the city limits, but the urban growth boundary. And we compare those two things, do you have enough land within that area to meet these future housing and land needs that we've identified? And is the land zoned for the right, um, zoned in the right ways to accommodate the needs we've identified? So that's kind of the basic process we go through. And then uh, based on what we find, we recommend a set of amendments to your Comprehensive Plan, partly to include the information and the findings that we've been working on and then also to update your policies to make sure they're in line with what we found in the Housing Needs Analysis and in this Housing Strategies Report work that we did. And then the same thing with the Development Code. Um, I will note that in some cities, we don't go quite as far in the Development Code. You all got um, a grant for this work from the state and that was able to cover us kind of taking the next step in terms of implementing some of the recommendations and drafting a set of amendments to your Development Code. So you guys kind of got to do more than the typical city would do as part of this process, given that, so. All right, so next one. So again, I'll talk a little bit more about the background here, go ahead to the next one. So this table summarizes some information about how much growth you've seen over the last twenty years and the amount of growth that's been projected. Kind of a couple of key things to note here and then I'll note some other things on some subsequent slides about this as well. You've seen a growth um, or growth of about fifteen hundred people um, between two thousand and two thousand twenty-one. That equates to about six hundred households. And as Taylor mentioned, um, as part of these processes, cities are required to use um, current population projections and future population growth rates that are prepared by the Portland State University Population and Research Center. So those are sort of the official numbers that we need to use. We did do an alternative forecast, I'll talk about that in a moment. And I'll also talk about some issues with that, those numbers that we started out with, because there were some issues with that, which is why we did the alternative forecast. So, but sort of the official numbers and we did this early in this whole process. So this was done in twenty twenty-one, another first half of twenty twenty-one. So at that time, we didn't have the twenty twenty census avail, numbers available, so we were using the PSU estimates. So all these numbers reflect the PSU estimates and the PSU forecasted growth rates. You have about two and a half people per household in the city. The shared households that are uh, considered to find is family households by the census, it's about seventy percent. And you have a five percent vacancy rate, which is um, not a high vacancy rate. It means there's a fair bit of competition for the housing that you have here. Um, and I think the vacancy rate for uh, rental housing is even lower than that. So, next one. Uh, just a little bit of information on incomes in Estacada compared um, to the county. Your incomes have increased um, over time, both median and per capita income has gone up between two thousand and ten and two thousand twenty-one. But the median median income here is still lower than the county. But it's higher than the state median, the county has a fairly high median. And income growth has outpaced inflation, so that's good. That means incomes actually have grown in real terms um, in Estacada. So, next one. So, some caveats again with the population numbers and Taylor mentioned this earlier, I'm gonna sort of So some caveats again with the population numbers and Taylor mentioned this earlier, I'm gonna sort of. Hammer on it a little bit more, because I know it's been a concern by members of the council. So those twenty twenty one P S U estimates likely undercounted Estacada's population at that time. They, based on what we saw in the twenty twenty census, and they likely underestimate the amount of growth that. Realistically, you'll expect to see in Estacada over the next twenty years. And a lot of development has actually already been approved just in the last two to three years. So sort of recognizing that, recognizing. Based on state requirements, we need to use a certain set of numbers. We also did an alternative forecast, which assumed. A starting point that was closer to what the twenty twenty census ultimately identified and it assumed a higher rate of growth. That looked a little more similar to what you've seen over the last ten years or so. The whole point of doing these projections is to estimate. How much land is needed within your urban growth boundary to support that future housing? So what we found when we did that alternative forecast that showed about. Let's see. It showed about seventeen hundred needed new households instead of six hundred and forty roughly. We still found that there's enough land in your urban growth boundary to accommodate those needs, even under that higher level forecast. So that was important. It means you're not going to run out of land anytime soon. You've got, there's some sort of legitimate concerns about the numbers we needed to use, but. The overall outcome doesn't really change. You know, the the you don't, you're not facing a shortage of land. You may in the next five to ten years see a shortage of land zone for multifamily housing. That's part of where we're coming from on some of the Development Code recommendations. So they are tied partly to that finding. The other couple of things I will say is that those Portland State University forecasts are updated every four years. And so within the next two to three years, yours will be updated. You can take a look at those. And there's, we recommend that you don't wait another twenty years to update your Housing Needs Analysis. There's one of the comp plan policies talks about doing that. Either every six to eight years or sooner if needed. If growth is really occurring much faster, so I would say you should probably revisit those forecasts in the next three to five years. Just to make sure you're kind of keeping pace with growth in terms of the amount of land you have in the city to accommodate future housing. And the state is now requiring cities over a certain size. To update these forecasts every six to eight years, you are not. You're smaller than the size threshold, so you don't have to do it, but it's a good idea to do it regardless. So. Don't let that wait too long is my advice on that. All right, next one. So that's sort of the, again, the demand side of the equation, the housing need and land need side of the equation. We also looked at. The inventory, which is how much land you have within the city that's zoned for housing or for residential uses. And is not constrained by. Natural resources or natural hazards, so streams, wetlands, steeply sloped areas, things like that. And that's not planned for public facilities like schools and parks and those sorts of things. So. We take a look at that to come up with an estimate of how much land you have that could be used for housing over the next twenty years. It doesn't mean that every one of those people who owns a piece of property that's vacant is ready to develop it or plans to develop it. But over that twenty year long term planning period, the assumption is that it's potentially. Developable or buildable. We also kind of net out or subtract land that's needed for roads and utilities and things like that. So we come up with this kind of net. Number of acres of land that can be used for housing. And so that's what this slide is sort of showing is our method to go through that. And again, there's some things we can't use to take land out of the inventory and particularly property owner willingness to sell or develop at a given point in time. We can't take that out, even though we know that will certainly affect. In the short term for sure, maybe even in the medium to longer term, whether or not property gets developed. So so we look at that and then we do a comparison of the land need and supply. So go to the next one, please. These are just some maps that show you kind of land on the left that's zoned for residential use. That's all the yellow areas. Or mixed use, so that's a mix of residential and typically commercial or retail use. That's the kind of pink areas on the left. And on the right is showing you land that's either developed. In which is in red, that's under some kind of public ownership for some public purpose. That's the blue land, dark blue land, I should say. And then vacant is the green stuff. Constrained is kind of the red hatched areas and then partially vacant. Is kind of the media, the light blue. So the green and the light blue represents the supply of land in Estacada. That's zoned for residential use could be used for housing over the next twenty years. We can't, unfortunately, I'm sorry, yeah, we don't think we can really, can we? Okay, a little bit. Oh, thanks. I didn't think we could. Sorry about that. Yeah, so and. This changes all the time. So this is the other thing to point out. This is a sort of point in time set of maps. Prepared about a year ago. So some of that may have changed. You might go up and go, well, that's not vacant anymore, and you're probably right. But at the time of the analysis, it was. So go ahead to the next one. And we had a fair bit of review of those maps with city staff. We did our own kind of initial review as well. So. This looks at that comparison of land and supply and shows you whether or not you have enough land to meet these future needs. The far right column, bottom row, that's sort of the highlights, that's the. The key results and it's showing that under the. The formal forecast or the official forecast. You've got a surplus of land that equates to about five thousand housing units. So even if. You see the need for, instead of. Six hundred and forty housing units, you see the need for seventeen hundred units or even three thousand units, you've still got enough land within your urban. Growth boundary to accommodate that need. Or you might start to fall short is again in that higher density in those higher density designations. That's where you're a little more on the edge in terms of the potential deficit. And where you could see a shortage in the future. And and it probably, you know, that could happen depending on what type of housing is developed here. It could happen sooner or later in that time period. So next one. So again, we did this alternative forecast, assumed higher rates of growth, and we still found an adequate supply. This shows sort of what that relative. Actually shows the updated forecast and it shows basically. An increase of. If you kind of subtracted right two numbers, the thirty seven hundred and twenty five hundred, that's about twelve hundred additional housing units. Add that to the six hundred we estimated in the baseline, that's about eighteen hundred. So again, on that last slide, what you saw is a surplus of about five thousand. So we're still assuming a surplus. It didn't really change the bottom line, even assuming that higher growth. All right. That was a lot of math, especially doing it sort of in my head, what was on the screen. So apologies for that. So that's the background on the analysis that led up to then the proposed comprehensive plan updates. And Development Code Amendments. I will talk about the housing, the comprehensive plan or comp plan updates and then. Kate will talk about the Development Code Updates. And again, some of this will repeat a little bit of what you heard from Taylor. So she talked about a number of these things in terms of, these are, these are the things we're trying to achieve. With the proposed updates to your comprehensive plan policies in your housing chapter. Taylor talked about supporting creation of a wide range of housing options. One of the things that that Housing Needs Analysis said was. Over the next twenty years, you're gonna, you're going to need or the folks who live here are likely to need. A wider variety of types of housing, so not just kind of your traditional single family homes. But also some of the things that Taylor mentioned, middle housing, that's like duplexes, triplexes. What's called cottage cluster housing, townhomes, those forms of housing. They make up about ten to twelve percent of the future need. And then multifamily housing typically thought of as apartments, that's about twenty percent of the future need. So providing for a range of options for people who are at different stages of life, who have different household sizes, who want different things out of their housing. Who have different levels of income, that's really important. That's like probably the most important of these various policies in the comp plan. But there's some other things that are important. Affirmatively furthering federal fair housing goals, that's important, basically making sure people are not discriminated. Against when they're looking for housing, it's a federal law, it's important for the city to support that too. Supporting collaboration with other folks in the region in terms of looking at housing needs. And particularly supporting partnerships with the folks who are out there developing housing. Whether they're developing market rate housing or housing for people with lower incomes or providing supportive services for people. All of that's really important because you as a city, you can't do all these things on your own. So partnering with and supporting those partnerships is really important. Because you're sort of closer to the edge of the. Potentially needing some more land for higher density zoning designations in the future. We didn't, as part of this process, identify specific areas and say, let's rezone these now, but we did say if people come along and want to rezone their property. To help address that need in the future, the city should support that. And here are some types of areas. That it would make sense to build that housing in, areas that are close to services, shopping, public facilities. Transit services, et cetera. We'll talk more about that in a little bit, but there's a policy there. And then we also updated your policies just to remove some things that. Had already been accomplished, they really represented actions where they're no longer sort of consistent with state law or things like that. So. You'll see some policies struck out and that's the reason they're struck out. So the next few slides, I'm gonna take that away from you. Sorry, no, that. Oh, sorry, that's that's the link I'm gonna take away. So I just want to reference where this is in the handout. So in Exhibit One. The stuff that's on this first slide is on page one of Exhibit One, and what's on the next couple of slides is on pages ten and eleven of Exhibit One. In case it's, actually, it's not too hard to see on the screen. I think Alan must have bumped it up in size. So. We proposed some changes to the overall goal in the Housing Chapter and then the objectives. So some of these are pretty minor changes. So the goal, we're just saying, hey, let's talk about both current and future housing needs, not just. What it said in the year two thousand, that was the last time this goal was updated. Under the objectives, again, we talk about current and projected needs. For housing of the community, just trying to make that holistic. Talking about making sure that there's sufficient land to meet those future housing needs, that's objective two. And talking about. Ensuring that development preserves residential areas. So you don't develop other things. You develop housing in residential areas. Not other types of uses, except the things that are needed and important like schools and parks and things like that. And then allowing mixed use areas in areas designated for mixed use. So we just want to be sure like we're, we're not getting so specific there that you can't make some changes. To your code or your policy in or policies in the future, that mixed use belongs in areas where you've decided, yeah, that's where it where it should go. So let's see. So then we've got a series of policy amendments. Nice, thank you. And so I'll walk through these and then I'll get to stop talking. You'll get to stop listening to me and you'll get to hear from Kate for a while. I hate to say this, but she has more slides than I do, but you might go through them more quickly. We'll see. So in terms of the policies, first one is really talking about kind of. This this idea of providing for a variety of housing options, you know, for people. Different types of housing, different densities, different rent levels and price levels. A wider range of both ownership and rental housing. You currently have a quite a mix of rental and ownership housing and you're going to continue to need that in the future. Again, for people in different situations, there's a couple of these that are sort of no longer applicable that we dropped out. Of the mix because they've already been done or they're not, they're not relevant anymore. We did include a policy around working with Clackamas County and other jurisdictions in terms of thinking about this in a regional way. We, I mentioned earlier that including a policy around supporting the Fair Housing Act, so that's number four. Didn't touch number five, so we left a few of them alone. Next one. Not too much of a, there we go, change to Policy Six, other than just to reference. Cause we talk, and this is actually an existing policy, so the only change we made to it was to reference the correct section of the comprehensive plan. It's important to encourage maintenance and development of manufactured dwellings and factory bought dwellings. Ready as an alternative to kind of site built dwellings. There was already some language in this. We just kind of updated it with more current terminology. No change to number eight. Number nine, again, is something that's essentially kind of been addressed through some previous planning processes. Number nine, we're talking about kind of encouraging. Mixed use, so development of housing on upper stories of commercial buildings where you're where the city allows that in the downtown. Partly because it creates more kind of liveliness downtown and and residents who are close to services and. Customers for those businesses downtown. So we updated that policy and then. The Policy Ten is just generally about encouraging maintenance and restoration of existing housing. It's really important to take care of the housing stock that you have. And there are a number of programs out there at the state and county level that can help you do that. So it's kind of. Taking advantage of those programs to help do that for the folks who are already living here particularly. I think I've got one more. So. The first one here is, I mentioned this earlier, talks about expanding partnerships with. Nonprofit housing developers and others that are providing low to moderate income housing. And I'll say that, you know, frankly, the private market is going to meet the needs of people who have more money. It's not going to always meet the needs of people who have less money. And so it's really important to support the organizations who are out there doing that. And that's really what that policy is all about. That's where more intervention is needed is to is to meet those folks' needs. And then number twelve is about making sure that. You do have enough land in your boundary over time to meet these future housing needs. And then the last one is this policy related to encouraging. I'm actually gonna read this one and we're gonna ask you a question about this, I think maybe on the next slide or two. So it says encourage voluntary rezoning of low and medium density zone properties to a higher density designation. When proximate to other sites zoned for high density, so when they're close to other high density housing. Or areas where it could be developed. Or to services such as transit lines, libraries and the downtown zone. And the thing I'm going to note here specifically is in an early iteration of this policy, we also had the words. We had schools and parks in here. And so we've had some kind of back and forth discussion about that, both with that council and with. Our advisory committee about whether to include those words, is that like. Make this this potential map sort of too much area to look at or to apply this policy to or not. So we're. Interested in your opinion on that before we go back to council. So next slide. Oh, implementation, then I think we do have one more where we kind of go back to that policy, right? Yeah. So implementation, you're not every comprehensive plan has. Kind of implementation actions in it associated with each chapter, but yours does. So it's got sort of a small number of them and we updated and added to them. So one, we talked about taking one, continuing to update your zoning ordinance every three to six years. We don't like to say exactly every four, exactly every five, it's kind of good to have a range on there. To meet housing needs that are identified in the comprehensive plan and then, of course, to consistently implement and enforce the zoning ordinance. The second one's kind of already, already there. We didn't, we didn't mess with that one. The third one's all about what I talked about earlier in terms of keeping an eye on the supply of buildable land within the city and making sure you're not running out of that. And looking at that, we said approximately every eight years. You might want to, at least in the near term, look at it even even a little more frequently. And then we again prepared this strategy work, some of which we are putting in front of you in terms of the code amendments, but there's some other things. In that Housing Strategy Document that this action talks about. As resources allow, you want to continue to look at implementing some of those things as well. So. Recognizing that your ability to do that depends on staff and money and time, so we want to kind of put some of those. Qualifiers on that. So. So this voluntary rezoning policy, I already talked about this a little bit, kind of already noted the first bullet there. And kind of the second one. So we're proposing this new policy. It doesn't automatically rezone those areas. It doesn't automatically approve rezoning those areas. But it does provide sort of policy support for doing that. When somebody comes along with an application to do that, but they would still have to meet the approval criteria. In your Development Code to be able to get that approved. So it's not sort of a blank check. But it's some additional policy support, so they can say, hey, my property is in this area that the city thinks. Um, but it's some additional policy support. So they can say, hey, my property is in this area that the city thinks generally makes sense. For higher density housing. Um, and so that's the policy I read verbatim a little bit earlier. Um, do we have one more on this one? Just the maps. Okay, well, let's just those up. So these maps show kind of what the current policy language um equates to. So on the left, that's showing areas that are um in proximity to land that's already zoned for higher density or mixed use. As well as areas around the downtown or that are close to um any transit lines. Um, so that's essentially the map that would be um included as a a reference document along with. Policy to support the policy. And then the map on the right. Just kind of asked the question, should schools also be included? If we included school sites, it would. Add some of those areas around the school that you don't see on the map on the left. So um we are curious about that. Um, and so maybe when we get into questions and comments, we'd love to get your feedback on that. So I think maybe I'll just say, think about that. And when we get to the discussion portion, um we'd like to hear if you have an opinion on that. So. Uh, and I think I might be done. And yeah, so talked about that. I got ahead of myself. Sorry about that. This is just saying, hey. Um, this is uh a thing we could do. So, yeah, next one. Alright, so I'm done for a while or I'm I am done for a while. Um, and Kate will continue. So thank you for your patience. I know that was a lot of talking on my part. I have to drink some water um and take a break.
Alright, well, this this part will be really exciting because we're talking development code here. So, um. Okay, so I think Taylor already kind of covered the the purpose of these code amendments, but I'm gonna kind of touch on these again. Um. Okay, so the first one is to develop a wider or a support development of a wider range or variety of housing types in more zones. And this is basically, you know, the the housing needs analysis showed that we don't just need single-family homes. Which, you know, not every household or individual can afford. Um, the city needs, you know, more more options, including the second. One, which is middle housing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, common wall dwellings, which are also known as townhomes or row houses. And cottage clusters, which are um individual small dwelling detached dwelling units um sharing the same lot. Um, oriented around a shared open space. Um, the third one is is making some adjustments to the development standards to ensure that not only are those housing types. Permitted, but they're also, you know, feasible to build so that, you know, for example, minimum lot sizes. Aren't so large that it wouldn't even sort of financially pencil out to make those units um work on those on those properties. Uh, next one. Also increasing permitted densities in the high-density zones. Um, we talked about how there's. A potential shortage of multifamily um housing in the city or might be in the future. And this is one way to kind of approach that. Um, concern. Um, and then also establishing minimum density standards, which. Would ensure that not only are more higher higher density development, more units per acre permitted, but also that. Um, a developer couldn't come in and build, for example, very low density, say, large lot, single-family housing in. In a high-density residential zone, which is really intended for multifamily and other, you know, townhomes and things like that. Um, and that's just to ensure that the the land that's within the current urban growth boundary is used efficiently to meet housing needs. Um, reducing code barriers for accessory dwelling units, which are already permitted in the city, but there are some ways to um. Make those a little more feasible to build and encourage those uses. Um, and then also to comply with some recent state laws related to manufactured homes. And I don't know if I'll get into the details of that one, but. That's just kind of a um compliance update. Alright, so I'm gonna kind of walk through um the code updates in order of how they how they are in the development code. Um, I'm gonna try not to get into too much detail, but it is, it is fairly dry. It is the development code. So hopefully it won't be too too boring. Starting with chapter sixteen point oh eight definitions. And these are really just, we needed to add some definitions to kind of support the other um code amendments and the other chapters. Related to kind of clarifying differences between the various housing types. Because the proposal is to allow more types of middle housing in more zones. Those middle housing types needed to be defined very clearly and separately. For example, um plexes are currently considered multifamily. And those needed to be separated in the in their definitions from multifamily, so they could be regulated separately. Um, and then some sort of supporting definitions such as net acreage. And a new kind of category of housing, which is middle housing, which includes all those other um housing types we've talked about. Next slide is the low-density residential or R one zone. Um, and a very large portion of of the current city is zoned for R one. And so one of the biggest changes is to permit middle housing types outright in our one zone currently. I believe only duplexes and two-unit common wall dwellings are permitted in that zone, but only through a conditional use process, which of course requires a public hearing. So this would allow not only duplexes, um but also triplexes and up to four units of a of um. A quadplex or a common wall dwellings or four units in a cottage cluster. So kind of small, relatively small scale middle housing. But that is, that would be a change in the R one zone. There were some concerns from the city council about um the potential for a very large, for example, new subdivisions being built out with. Um, all say all one type of middle housing, say all triplexes or all common wall dwellings. So there are some uh proposed kind of limitations on how much land could be developed in a new large subdivision. With any one single type of housing. So that's kind of just intended to encourage some housing variety. And that would not, it would not apply to single-family subdivisions. Those could still be built out just with single family, but this would just apply to middle housing. Um, and then because um or excuse me, middle housing is not currently permitted. In the R one zone, we needed to establish new minimum lot sizes for those new housing types. And so the proposal is to allow essentially duplexes on the same size lot as current is currently required for a single family. So that's seventy-five hundred square feet. And then um for all other middle housing types, it's twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. And that's, that's actually a reduction even compared to some of the zones where those housing types are permitted today. But the minimum lot sizes for those, for example, for common wall dwellings, even in the R three zone, the multifamily zone. Are really so large that, I mean, it would be very unusual for those housing types to be developed. It just wouldn't really be feasible. And that was kind of based on, um, we, part of our consultant team did some stakeholder interviews with developers. And that was kind of the input they provided was that, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't build those housing types unless you provide some reductions on uh lot sizes. And then a a small change to the front setbacks from twenty feet to fifteen feet, just to kind of provide more space on the lot for those housing types. Alright, moving on to the medium-density residential zone. Um, you'll see some kind of similar similarities here with our one zone. So permitting middle housing outright in that zone as well. Some types are currently permitted. But other types are only permitted through conditional use. So making all of those types permitted outright. Um, allowing slightly larger common wall and cottage cluster developments up to six units. And you'll see similar standards for the middle housing types um in terms of lot size, so twenty-five hundred square feet per unit again. Same as the R one zone. Um, the only difference is, I guess duplexes would would be kind of the same calculation because the minimum lot size. For a single family in that zone is five thousand square feet. And then the same change to setbacks. Alright, moving up to the multifamily uh residential R three zone. So this is, you know, this is your primary multifamily zone. Um, and currently. The maximum permitted densities are based on a requirement of minimum land area per unit. So it's not a total dwelling units per acre maximum. It's it's kind of a um. A calculation that sort of scales based on the size, the total number of units in the development. And what that does is it tends to kind of discourage smaller scale multifamily because it requires more land per unit for those. Smaller, um say, five unit, you know, uh plex, five plex. And so the the proposal is to have kind of a flat. Units per acre maximum, that's thirty units per acre, which is a kind of a pretty small increase over the actual. Current standard, but it would also apply that standard even to smaller, for example, smaller sites, because you so you could fit a few more units on a smaller. Um, site for a multifamily development. There would also be a a minimum density standard of fifteen units per acre. Um, which is roughly kind of a town, a typical sort of townhouse development density. Um, so that would be the the minimum that would need to be achieved if you're proposing. Multifamily or if you're dividing land. So that minimum density standard wouldn't apply to, say, a small-scale infill development. Or you're not dividing land or creating at least four lots. Um, so it really only applied to multi-unit um or land division developments. Same changes to setbacks and also a proposal to increase the maximum height for multifamily dwellings. From thirty-five feet to forty-five feet. And that's to to just, I mean, that's so that's basically three stories to four stories. Um, allowing additional kind of height, which kind of matches the proposed increase in um density. Alright, looking at the NCR, the North City Residential Zone, and this is one of the zones that was adopted relatively recently, within the last, I think, four or five years. And some middle housing types are already permitted in this zone. Um, and the proposal is just to. Kind of allow more middle housing types in more parts of the NCR zone. Um, so allowing up to four units um outright. Continuing to limit multifamily development to areas that are near major roads. That's one of the things and. Things that's in the current code is kind of focusing multifamily around major um sort of transportation facilities and. Uh, allowing um single-family and small-scale middle housing in the rest of the NCR zone. Same kind of standards for a minimum lot size that we've seen in the other zones. Um, in terms of maximum density, applying the same maximum of thirty units per acre that would apply that we proposed for the um R three zone. Really, these are all pretty much the same, increasing maximum building height for multifamily from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet. Looking at the residential commercial zone, C two. Let's see, maybe I'll just point out the things that are different instead of. I mean, yeah, that it's all pretty consistent. So basically, you know, not trying to make um. To increase densities much beyond what's what's allowed today, but just kind of trying to stay consistent. Across the zones that currently permit multifamily housing. Next slide. So now we're moving into the mixed-use zone, so the middle area mixed use. This this zone already permits somewhat higher densities and it's really intended for kind of more urban-style mixed-use development. Of course, it allows. Commercial uses in addition to residential. Um, so allowing somewhat higher densities there. So for minimum lot sizes. Allowing, for example, duplexes on a four thousand square foot lot, that's the the standard for single family. Same minimum area per unit of twenty-five hundred square feet for other types of middle housing. And then actually for common wall dwellings. Somewhat higher densities are already permitted there. So that's that's really just kind of a minor tweak to what the standard is today. Um, and then for that zone, increasing the density um for multifamily up to fifty units per acre. And that is um really to be kind of consistent with the maximum height that is permitted in that zone, which is sixty-five feet. So no, no change to maximum height is proposed, but really with the current um density land area per unit requirements. You could not achieve sixty-five feet of building height in most cases. So really just kind of trying to be consistent with what the standards are today. And then the minimum density would be twenty-five units per acre um based on the maximum density. Pretty similar, the CMU, central mixed-use zone is pretty similar to the MMU zone. So really those. Those proposed changes are pretty similar. Um, I will note that there was a mistake in the packet for the maximum density where. Um, it was my mistake. I I think I may just copied the wrong number, but uh it should be fifty units per acre, which again would be consistent with the MMU zone. Um, so that's a change that we will make for the um city council version of the packet. And let's see what's next. So that's all the base zones. So we added some new kind of um provisions, just to clarify, since we're proposing a new way of calculating density. That's maximum units per acre versus um. Minimum land area per unit, just adding some provisions to kind of clarify that and um to show how that should be calculated. And then same with minimum density requirements. So since those are new provisions in the code. Next slide. For the accessory dwelling units chapter, um I think the biggest change that's proposed is currently um one. ADU or accessory dwelling unit is permitted per single-family home, which is a statewide requirement. And so a proposal to kind of make accessory dwelling units more more feasible and to allow them kind of in more cases. Especially if you have a larger lot where you might be able to accommodate more than one, is to allow two ADUs. But the at least one of those ADUs would have to be either part of the the primary structure. So it could be in the basement or in the attic. Or or uh it could be an attachment uh in addition to the house. And then the second ADU could be a detached dwelling. There are some some limitations on that. I think the the lot size would need to meet the minimum lot area standard of the zone. And also there would be, so per state law, you can't require off-street parking for for one ADU. That's a state requirement. But if the city were to allow two ADUs, then we would recommend requiring a parking space for that second ADU. To ensure that there is at least some some additional parking provided. And then some additional proposed changes, just to make ADUs a little more feasible to build. So allowing some additional lot coverage on the site. Um, and reducing the rear setback from fifteen feet to ten feet. Looking at off-street parking, um the the proposed changes aren't too um too significant, but um. In terms of middle housing, the current requirement for single-family duplexes. And triplexes is two spaces per dwelling. So for a triplex, six total parking spaces, off-street parking spaces would be required in the current code. Um, and that just is enough to pretty much kill a project. I mean, that's a a pretty big chunk of your site that would have to be devoted to parking. So the proposed change would be basically to require one space per unit plus one additional space per lot. So. For a duplex, it would be three spaces, a triplex would be four spaces and a fourplex. Actually, the proposal is to require some additional parking, um because currently a fourplex is considered multifamily in the code. And in the current code, only one space per unit is required for multifamily. So this would actually be um increasing the parking requirement just by one space. For common wall dwellings, excuse me, currently two spaces per unit is required. And the proposed change would be to keep that requirement, but to um reduce it to just one if there is on-street parking. Directly sort of in front of or rebutting um the lot. So basically just to accommodate some of that parking on street if it's available. And also to provide a little bit of a um, a little more flexibility for. Plexes that are created from an existing sing- single-family home. So reducing the parking requirement to just one space per unit for those converted. Middle housing types. Alright, looking at non-conforming uses and structures. So one of the things that was pointed out early in the process is that. There are quite a few lots in the city that are um undersized compared to what the minimum lot area requirement is today. Um, and so under the current code, those lots, for example, in in the R one zone, if the lot is only four thousand square feet. Which might have been platted at a time, um, you know, before the new minimum lot size standards were in place. Under the current code, those couldn't be developed even with a single-family home, which really just um. It's just not an efficient use of space and, you know, people own those properties and there's not much they can do with them today. So the proposal is to allow those undersized or non-conforming lots to be developed with a single-family home or a duplex. Or a common wall dwelling, just because the sort of minimum land area per unit requirement is is smaller for common wall dwellings. Um, all other development standards like maximum height and minimum setbacks, those would all still apply. Um, but you could at least um build something on those, on those sites. And that's it. I actually got through that pretty fast, so. I guess we'll, we'll take a pause for some questions here and comments.
So. Do we want to go back to this? Do the statement.
Okay, I'll start over. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the city council must be raised prior to the close of the record of the final evidentiary hearing on the specific application. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the planning commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the city council on that issue.
Is there any correspondence regarding this application? I'm sure she's done that, right? You want to?
There's no additional correspondence beyond um those two letters of support that you have um as exhibits eight and nine.
Okay. So are we ready for the?
I think we're gonna take questions from you all.
Okay, well, we take it. Okay, let's take a five first. I already lost one planned. And make sure Richard, there's updated. Let's take a five. Come right back. About what thirteen after? By my watch, so it's fifteen after by that one. How's that? That way you guys can give. The, the way we're gonna do this now, I got stringed out by these. We're going to ask questions. Then, after we get our questions issued, then here is your guys' ballroom. And so who wants to be first to drill these guys? Okay. Get like, get close to the microphone so we can hear you. He can give closer to Richard. Richard, Richard, get it?
All right, uh, as I was listening to the last half of this uh this meeting and stuff, I, I come up with all kinds. Okay, I'll do that. All right, are we giving up the sixteen codes? And just modifying everyone twice lightwise right down the line? Cause I, I mean, uh, from what I wrote down here. We're moving towards more apartment buildings. And if I heard right, sixty-five feet.
So that, that's an existing standard you already have. You already allow in one of your zones.
Tell me which zone that is, because right now we don't have a fire truck with a ladder tall enough to reach any of that.
Well, that would be, I mean, the fire code supersedes the development code. So if the fire department can't serve the building, then it wouldn't be permitted. But yeah, that's.
Three stories currently is more than enough.
That's in the, either the mill area mixed use or the central mixed use zone, or maybe both. Um, which are zone.
It's a mixed use, all right. Um, then it looks like when I heard you talk about cottage housing, I go when in heaven is that? And I said, you know, the only cottage housing I know is uh for people like me that can't remember what I did yesterday. You know, it's for those that can't re- they meet new people every day. And I do. And they're the same people. Um, but if that's cottage housing, you know, if they're just one bedroom and they're in a circular, kind of like down at Turner.
Okay, ask the question. I'm waiting.
So, so they tend to be smaller um individual homes and that, so they're not attached to each other. Um, and as the standards we have would limit them to a certain size, I believe, right? No, sorry. Um, it wouldn't, and often, often cases it does, but the intent is for them to be smaller units, smaller homes on the same lot, surrounding some kind of common open space. Um, so it's for people, they tend to be for smaller households, um for people who kind of want that sense of community. Um, and um, you can do things with that housing, like have all the parking in one part of the lot, do things that just make it a little more flexible um to develop the housing. Um, so that's sort of generally what they are.
So if I heard you, it's a individual cluster, not attached in a circular that everybody can have a meeting spot in the middle. Parking lot is attached somewhere on the, on the lot.
Correct. And you can, the parking can be associated with each house or it can be grouped in a one part.
Heard you, you said each dwelling would be on twenty-five hundred feet of its own, or is that not part of that?
The requirement, so they, they could be arranged in, in various ways, but the requirement for the total, the total lot area would have to be at least twenty-five hundred square feet per lot. So if you had four units, it would need to be at least ten thousand square feet total.
Okay, that, that's.
But because they're, yeah, because they're, yeah.
On the next thing, I, I heard you make a remark about adding the school property. Is this an idea that the school property is going to get torn down and made into housing?
No, not at all. So.
Because it's kind of a fixed unit right there.
It's not, we're not proposing to um anything to do with the school itself. The, so there's a proposed policy um which would say if someone comes in with an application um to rezone their property and their property is close to the way the policy is written now is if it's close to the downtown or it's close to other areas that are already zoned for higher density housing. Um, or if it's close to, um, what are the other things that are in there now? Um, transit.
Transit, the downtown zone, um schools, I mean libraries, which currently.
So right now.
Within so, so much area of a school.
Yeah. Then.
Access to the buses.
Right. Yes. So, so the, the question is, right now, the list of those things that the property could be close to um where the city would say, hey, all other things being equal, it makes sense to potentially if the proposed rezoning meets all the city's other requirements. Um, we've already sort of said that that's a relatively reasonable place to propose a rezoning, but you still have to meet the other requirements. So right now that list of things doesn't include schools. So the question is, do we want to add schools to the list? So properties near the school also would be subject to that same policy.
That explains part of what I heard then as to not the whole story. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, my next question is, uh, are we giving up the city standard of seventy-five hundred square foot lots in the new developments going out here?
Um, so we're not, a couple of things on that. We are not suggesting a change to the basic lot size for single-family detached homes in those areas. That would still be seventy-five hundred square feet. But if somebody wanted to build a duplex or a triplex or a quadplex.
They'd need more.
They, they would, they would be allowed to do that where each unit, well, for the, for the duplex, duplex could be on a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, or a triplex or a quadplex. The average size of the, the lot for each unit would be twenty-five hundred square feet. So you'd still need seventy-five hundred square feet for a triplex. You'd need ten thousand for a quadplex.
When, when you're talking like that, the, the, the lot size itself, it could be three stories with family in each story then. If you're talking triplex or duplex or, you know, stacked on top.
Yes, they could be stacked or they could be next to each other or they could be some other configuration.
For that was, um, parking is a premium around here at any street on this city. As well as, you know, skinny streets can't park on the curb, can't park on the sidewalk, can't park in your own driveway. Can't have a trailer, can't have a boat, can't have an RV. Um, this I see has a big problem, but on all fairness, who would want to live reaching your hand out, shake your neighbors, you know, kind of like that old bonus kid through the, please share a cabinet in the bathroom.
I mean, a lot of people, I'm, I'm gonna say are actually willing to live that way. They do sort of all over the place. But it's just providing the option. And like you say, if people don't want that option, if there's not a market for that development, then you're not gonna see it happen. So it's, but it's creating the option.
I asked the question because that's, that's what I do. I'm, I've been a black sheep all my life. And now I'm getting to be a blind. Um, let's see. So I see, let's see. We have an already an ADU for five thousand square foot houses that are attached and they have to have their own garage. On site. Is that right? Where it has a nine hundred foot ADU on a house. I, I, I walked through some up here on Reagan Hill, I guess it was, Estates. And so anyway, they were building them, I mean, just as fast as they could get them up. But that's still in effect, I take it. Okay.
Yes.
And uh, we already talked about the parking wars and how that's gonna uh, four-story buildings, of course, uh, that was referring to a ladder truck by the fire department and that's not likely to happen anytime soon. Um. Basically, uh, I see the biggest problems with just giving one parking spot to each unit on a tri- tri-place or a fourplex or whatever. Um, I don't know any family that doesn't have two point three kids and two point three cars. Or three point two. Somewhere, you know what I mean? Anyway, that's my current questions. And uh, the, the, the fact that it is, I don't know two people in a family that don't have two cars.
And just one kind of minor clarification on that is that for a triplex, um, currently you do require two cars per unit, six cars, six, six parking spaces. You don't require the cars, but you require the parking. Um, we're proposing four for a triplex, so it's one per unit plus one more. So not quite down to one. Um, but yeah, you're right. It would, it would be a reduction for sure. And same sort of um deal for a quadplex, we're suggesting. Actually, with a quadplex, because of the way your code defines four units as multifamily, you only require four now. We're suggesting you require five total for a quadplex. So it's a reduction for the triplex um and the duplex, but it's actually a slight increase for the quadplex.
That's the hard one. I mean, you get my head wrapped around.
And I would just add that that is how much parking the code would require, but that's not to say that a developer couldn't propose more parking than that. If they thought that, you know, people would be more likely to want to rent those units or purchase those units if, say, two parking spaces were provided. So that's just the bare minimum. You could always provide more parking.
I know a few developers and they'll take every advantage to scratch an extra square foot out and more building and less parking. Uh, we've been pretty, pretty hard-nosed with the commercial industry down here at uh uh Park Avenue and Park Estates or whatever it is. And, you know. I'm glad we did. Uh, there's a lot of traffic after twenty-five years of implementing that. Tom was there, I was there, there's maybe Tracy was here. Um, we've watched it develop over time and it took a lot longer than we expected, which wasn't bad. We've watched it develop over time, and it took a lot longer than we expected, which wasn't bad. And so, anyway, I just look. What, the traffic pattern, thank you. The traffic pattern is uh, going through without a lot of lights in our, just to get out onto the main high. Just to get out on the main highway anymore. It's, it, it's horrible. We're flooded, we're backlogged, and we're gonna be two oh five inside the city limits. At rush hour. Seven to eight and five to seven. Okay, my questions are all.
Okay, is anybody online that wants to? Tara. Is she there? You've got any questions for these, these guys?
Sorry, I don't have, I don't have any questions, um. I would, you know, I would just say that I've. Gone to a couple of the housing needs analysis meetings, and I just think everyone's done a really great job. With all of this and with distilling the information to. A comprehensible level and, you know, as, as much as I. Am always the person who's like, how are we going to get these like, you know, these two hundred and forty houses worth of people? In and out of this town, how are we gonna? Where are they gonna grocery shop? How is, wha- what's happening with the sewage and, you know, I'm, I'm. Mostly a traffic specialist, though, mostly a traffic crab. Um, I, I really, you know. I, I, I'm, I know that there's other things going on to address some of those, those issues. And the, the biggest thing for me, when looking at this whole thing, is that we just, the way that things are developing now, we do not have affordable housing. We don't have rentals, we don't have anything that someone can't, who can't afford a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar house can really buy. So, this, this is, you know, it's. It's great to see that we're gonna be encouraging diverse kinds of housing, and yeah, I just really appreciate all the work that went into this.
Okay, so Richard, you got anything? Not you. You, you're telling you.
Yeah, I have, uh, how many housing units do we have in the city right now? For forty-four hundred people that live in the city, do you know how many there are?
Well, you have about two and a half um, people per unit on average, so. Again, I think you're actually closer to five thousand people, so you have about two thousand units.
So, when you get to the, the alternative. That you guys figured out, the eight thousand people. How many more is that gonna require? The six hundred plus the twelve hundred?
Yeah, approximately about, that would result in about eighteen hundred additional units. And again, we did that for the purposes of just. Taking a look at the official forecast we had to use to us, one, it looked to us like the starting point was too low. Like the, like Portland State University had not, had, had estimated not enough people who are in terms of how many who are here now or were here in twenty twenty. And two, their growth rates just looked low to us, given how much growth you've been seeing. So we, as sort of a just, hey, you know, if you were to grow faster. Because that was one of the questions we had from folks in this process, well, what happens if we do grow faster? Are we gonna have enough land to support that? Um, we wanted to look at that. As an alternative, not that we're proposing. Just to see if we thought, well, if you do grow faster, do you have enough land within your urban growth boundary to accommodate that growth? During that planning period, so that was the reason for looking at that. But yes, it, that forecast said, instead of six hundred units, six thirty-five. It would be closer to seven, between seventeen hundred and eighteen hundred m- more units. Yeah.
I, I noticed in your report that you had that most of the people that live here do not actually work. And so they're commuting outside this area. And leaving the area. Can people that, that rent a sixteen hundred dollar a month apartment, can they afford to drive to Portland?
I mean, I would, so, so I guess one thing I would say is. Probably, well, I, I don't know sort of what the composition of people who commute outside of Estacada is in terms of renters or owners. I bet a large percentage of them are actually homeowners. Um, so that's one thing I would say. I would say it's pretty like that, that distribution of people live and work here versus live here and work somewhere else versus work somewhere else and, or. Uh, live somewhere else and work here, like, that's pretty common, you see all, you see that kind of cross commuting. In every city that we work in, so that, that trend is not that uncommon. But I think part of what we're sort of looking at here in terms of. The analysis is that it is really hard for some people who work in Estacada to afford to live here, because you do have a lack of rental housing. And homes to purchase are quite expensive, at least newer homes, older homes, less so. So the point is to try to produce over the longer term. More housing that might be affordable to some of the people who do work here now and can't afford to live here. One of the things we heard in one of our public meetings with, from somebody was, hey, I've got two. Daughters who are like at the point where they need to decide where to live and they can't find any place they can afford to live here. So, you know, that's just, and, and they want to be able to stay here, so. At some point, you've gotta try to meet that balance, but there's always gonna be a certain percentage of people, right? Who um, work in one place and live in someplace else, especially with. Um, households where there's two people with jobs, you know, it's really hard often to, for them to both find a job in the same town, so that's part of the dynamic.
Estacada is a bedroom. Community of Portland, that's all there is to it. This is the end of the line, you cannot go anywhere from here. We can't even get natural gas. You know, it is what it is. But to uh, to change, to make wholesale changes, I am not so sure that. You know, the public's gonna like, especially with like, the bike situation, that you want to encourage. Bike and transit and stuff, we've had several meetings here. And the people that proposed the bike business one night almost got hung. I mean, they really did. People don't want that, they don't particularly, they don't, you don't see the residents here riding around on bikes. You see guys that come from in town, out here and ride bikes. But Estacada residents don't ride bikes.
So. I, I, I can't tell you. But we're here to talk more about housing, so I mean, interest, like, do you have other questions for us about some of the specific amendments?
Okay.
We have a couple of questions, um, would you define an R-three zone? The paperwork says it's a low-density residential, which is the same as an R-one.
No.
If, if that, if it does say that, that's a mistake, yeah, it's a, it's the multi-family, multi, multiple family.
R-threes.
Page eight of fifty-seven, it says that. R-three resident, R-three is a low-density residential.
Then that's a miss, that's a typo. R-three is your higher-density zone, along with some of your mixed-use zones in your, um, that we listed off there, but yeah. So let us know about the typos, I mean, either tonight or after this meeting.
Is that in the development code amendments? Cause that would be pretty.
That's in the housing strategy.
Okay.
Strategy report.
That report.
There's also um, a typo in the letter from the city, the planning one.
Yeah, definitely let us or Taylor know about, or Alan about any typos, I mean, you can let us know tonight, but. It might be easier to just let us know after the meeting and we'll make sure we correct those things.
Okay, I don't really have any more questions, but I do have a comment, I, I think that all the work that's been done on this is pretty remarkable. From the time I got appointed to tonight's meeting, I read every page of every piece of paper that was in the email. That's a lot of work that's gone in here. I, for one, live in the Lakeshore neighborhood, and I walk my dog. There's a lot of properties there that are vacant. There's nothing on there, and I'm always thinking, oh, this would be a great place for a duplex, or this would be a great place for a triplex. It's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take years, but I think it should happen.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um. The last. Few meetings we've had here, planning commission. Well, this was several months ago, we had someone uh, come in and. Explain to us as planning commissioners, if we get a uh, development request. Unless it meets the current zoning requirements, we are unable to. Not approve those developments. And we've had a lot of uh, homeowner residents that, that come in and they say. What are you guys doing? There's so much growth going on here. So, you know, that's, that's just a foundation for my question. So. The. Things that are being amended, it, it isn't just one or two things, it's the entire thing that's being amended. We're going, uh, in, in every uh, zone, everything is being condensed higher and higher. And currently, we've had, and, and my estimation is accelerated growth here in Estacada. Now, my, my question is, if we make it easier to condense the housing we've got. How much additional acceleration, percentage-wise? Do we think we're going to get? Like, you know, you, you know, you were uh, stating the PSU uh. Growth. Study, and then you said, well, we've got our own growth study based on what we've seen. And your own growth study says, oh no, we're growing much faster than that. So, if everything is left as is. The growth is still going to continue at a faster pace than the greater Portland area. But now, if we allow all of these changes, and there's not just one or two, or ten or twenty, it's, it's in the entire thing. How much faster do we anticipate the growth to happen here in Estacada? And I'm very concerned about that. And I know that uh. In past planning commission meetings, we have residents come in and they say, you know. Can't you do something about this? No, if it's in the code, we have to approve it. Now. We make those changes. Then it'll be in the code, and no matter what a developer wants to come in and, and propose. We have to approve it. So, you know, my question is, uh, you know, based on current projections. And after the code changes, how much additional growth do we see in Estacada? Because of the changes that are being made to the code.
So, I will attempt to answer that question.
Okay.
First, I'll say. We don't anticipate that these changes are actually gonna increase the amount of growth you have, it's more about. So, let me say why I say that, okay? So, most of these changes are targeted at certain types of housing. Particularly what, again, we called middle housing, so that's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes. Our estimate of the demand for that type of housing in the future as a percentage of the total housing is about ten percent. Total, for those. So we're not talking about changes to requirements related to most of the housing that would be built here in the future. The other thing I'll say is that in the last ten years, very little of those forms of housing have been built. Because your development standards make it essentially financially infeasible. So there is, uh, there is some demand for those types of housing, but there's not a demand for like, half your housing to be duplexes and townhomes. There's a demand for about. As we estimated, about ten percent of your housing to be duplexes and townhomes. Then there's also a certain demand for apartments, because not everyone wants to own a home or has the resources to own a home. Or is in a stage of life where they want to own a home, so there's a demand for about twenty percent of your housing to be apartments. And so some of these standards related to density are related to that form of housing, really. So, it's not so much, it's, it's basically allowing that kind of housing to be built at a scale that would be financially feasible. So that there's the opportunity to build it. Again. That doesn't necessarily, we're not doing really anything to the standards related to single-family detached homes.
I believe that there's a, a wholesale change to the entire thing. Um, setbacks being reduced, uh, and denser housing on, on lots.
Yes.
All of that will accelerate the growth that we currently have. And, you know, there, there's a lot of concern about our current, you know, uh, growth projections. And um, you know, there's, there's a lot of people that aren't uh, real excited about that.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that most of the changes, I, I'm not disagreeing that there's a lot of changes proposed to your code. Um, but that most of them are targeted to um, certain types of housing, so we haven't changed the, we're not proposing changing. Lot sizes for single-family detached homes, that's what in the last ten years, like eighty to ninety percent of your housing has been for those. That's the growth that you've seen.
You're encouraging going from R-one to R-two and R-two to R-three, correct?
But that's not where people would build single-family detached homes, which is the majority of, well, the R-two to some degree, but not R-three.
Yeah, but, you know, uh, encouraging uh, to, you know, what it's currently zoned to a, a higher density. On every single lot, I, I mean, the proposal is out there to encourage that.
Again, for certain types of housing, that is true, but not for all housing, and not for the majority of housing.
About, you know, what properties are zoned for. And, you know, it, it could affect everything.
Yeah, a- again, I think it's going to, i- if you're asking me, do I think it's going to accelerate growth? I don't think it's gonna have any impact on the acceleration of growth of single-family detached housing. Which is most of what you're seeing, like, you're gonna see that, there's no question, but I don't think these code changes will affect that form of housing. But they might increase the amount of.
Overall, housing um, projections will accelerate beyond what they are today.
That could be, and I, you know, again.
I was just wondering how much the, the percentage, ten percent, twenty percent, fifty percent, I, I don't.
Yeah, that I don't think we know, and I think what we saw is regardless of whether you make these changes, you have a lot of, as you said, you've got a lot of land in the city, so.
We do.
I, if uh, somebody. A, a property owner wants to develop it, and as you say, if they submit an application that's consistent with your standards, then.
Right.
They get to develop it, that's just kind of how, how it works.
If we save all of these, the, the entire thing. Um, developers can come in here where they might not have before and say, oh, I want to build. A hundred units instead of, you know, fifty units.
Again, that is possible, but only of certain types of units.
Make everything uh, much more dense here in Estacada.
Yes. Sure, yeah, we, we've got our economist on the phone, so we can see if he has any.
Okay.
Anything to add to this.
Sure.
Brendan, are you there?
Hi, I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, so, uh. In terms of sort of what the standards would allow, the, um, yes, some of them allow. Uh, increased density for some housing types, as Matt has been talking about, but. You know, really, um, your situation in Estacada is that you have a. Lot of land that's already inside your urban growth boundary. In excess of um, the growth that we've projected, um, you know, quite a bit in excess, so. You know, really, the, the growth rate out there is likely to be what it's going to be, because you don't have. Those kind of land restrictions on it uh, taking place, so. I. Think you might see uh, new types of housing that you haven't seen before, um, or haven't seen much of. Of, that's, that's possible, but um, that. Uh, you know, there's also need from certain segments of the population for those different housing types. Um, and i- it's tough to predict if it would actually increase, um. You know, how much it might increase your growth rate over what you're already seeing, which as you've noted. Is, is, is pretty high growth. But, you know, I think the, the difference between, you know, the sort of uh, single-family subdivision development. That Estacada has experienced, you know, the difference between that happening on. Um, eight thousand square foot lots or seven thousand square foot lots is going to be less. And, and that is gonna continue to be the majority of your housing demand will be for, continue to be for single-family housing.
No, that's an impression.
Not really.
No, really, I didn't mind either, so.
Yeah, and I, I wish I had a crystal ball. But for me to sort of say, well, these amendments might increase growth by ten or fifteen percent, it would be just a guess.
Okay, well, it, it, it's really. Um, we as Estacadans, what do we want to be when we grow up?
Yeah.
And what you're proposing is something different than what my vision is.
Okay.
Okay, so. Making a long story short, I agree with Mike. Um, you change something, it's an open market. It's completely an open market. We don't, if. If you say, or that paper says. Um, it can be done. We can't stop it. The city goes into a little meeting and they say. It's been improved. We, the planning commission are looking at each other saying. So what are we here for? Um. I, I really think you guys did a fantastic job. Don't get me wrong. It is a fantastic job. But the, my problem, and it will always be. I don't want to lose all the power. Of what we are here for. If, if that's a goal to get rid of the planning commission. Let's, let's get the council, the city staff, whatever. And dissolve the planning commission. But I don't think that's the plan. We, we are here to back them up. When I was on the council, we were there. Waiting for the planning commission. To give us their opinion. Now. I don't know what the city council is doing because they can't, we can't really give our opinion. Because we can't hear it. So. This, uh, do you know that law? About, with the, with the planning commission. When they, when they go into their, what do you call those meetings? The pub, the hearings that they have, if they find everything completely, um. Buy the book. They can bring it to, they grew up bringing to it to help you. And we have no choice except to approve it.
Why, why don't you have a choice?
Well, that, that's just, we had a, we had a conference typing on the phone. And we spent a lot of time. Had during that, and the guy, the guy that did the meeting said exactly that. You know, and I'm sitting, thinking of Mike said, stop, hold it, hold it, hold it. You know, I'm not sure who would have stopped it, but. To question that. And of course, I, I questioned it afterwards. With his previous city manager, and she said, yes, that's the way it goes. So this is, like I said, this is, if we want to basically eliminate the planning commission. This is the way to go. But it's not, I, I don't think it, it is. Okay, that with a duplex and all that parking. I do also live on Lake Shore. And I, when I got down home, and there's a lot of kids right there at that triplex. But that has nothing to do with it. It's the cars. The cars, they park on the street. The kids goes between the cars. They block the driveway, they go through. So. You have to go five miles an hour or less. I don't know how many pit time parents yell at me, and I'm only going five. But. So. I really, there's one part that this thing I don't agree with. The next one. Uh. I can't read my writing, I'm sorry. With the, okay, four thousand square feet. You, you proposing that. Put that in a book. I don't want that in the book. One, number one, my neighbor has a duplex. And. You know, now you tell him him. All he has to do is get a possessive permission and put a house right on top of me. And I do not want to talk to my neighbors. Like some people does, like you said. Go, talk. Okay.
Which, just to clarify, that's would just be in one of your zones, which is like your highest density, so.
But, you know. You know, I, I bought that house forty some years ago. And, you know. And I made an agreement with the owner, and I continued to make agreement. They didn't do anything with it. Unless they sold it to me. Um. And I hope they listen to me, but. But anyway, those are my concern. Is anybody else? Go ahead, bring it up? No? Yes? Go, one more time.
Is someone speaking not into a microphone that can speak into a microphone?
I'm gonna try. Uh. I've been listening to the other commissioners. And I have to agree with them, you know. I wrote this down and changed it just a little bit. It says, we, I, I wrote down me and I. And, uh, the three of us. Uh, are trying to be on the cautious side. I'm seeing a possibility, like he said, of opening a Pandora's box. We, we all know what that is. And you can't shut it. Once you put it on the paper and on the books and on the, the sixteen code. It just makes our job moot. Right? Yeah, we've, we've all been here a lot of years. And we'd be hard pressed to, I would be, be hard pressed. To send this as. A whole to our council with approval. At this time, I'd like to hold this thing over so I can study this thing.
Let's go ahead and finish it first.
Yeah, I heard that. That's why I wrote that down. Uh, I have one question, and this is a good one. Do you have a community that we as a commissioners? And go look at that has this currently built on it? The reason I ask that is because this came up twenty years ago when the town of Banks had this. Yeah, I just figured somebody might remember this.
I remember.
They had a developer that came in, we want tiny lots, we want cutting edge technology. And it put the town of Banks in bankruptcy. They had to put in a brand new sewer, they had to do a new water system, as I remember. And their streets are so narrow, you can't park on, my truck wouldn't even make the turns in that development. And I've just got a standard four wheel drive pickup. Um, some people say I drive on the sidewalk anyway, but.
Okay.
But you, you get my, you know, I'd love to see a picture for a community of what has this already. Uh, rather than just put it on the box, books and see what happens.
You're, you're, the clarifier, are you talking about a smaller town that has, uh, done something like this and the result of that?
It was, yeah, it was a smaller town. It's, it's.
I mean, so. We could certainly, as a follow up to this, provide you with some, um, photos from communities who have adopted similar kinds of standards. Some smaller communities and some medium or larger size.
We went to Springfield and we went to, uh, Banks to look at what they had, and we thought, oh, no, no, no.
So I think the short answer is, yeah, if you'd like to see some examples of other places, personally, I've done something similar. Yeah, we could send you some, um, information around that.
Is there anything else you want to say before, before we go to the audience?
Uh, I don't have anything else, but.
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, um, well, I just, I just wanted to, I guess. Translate a little bit of what, um, what Thomas said, and, you know, he's referring to a. Um, a training that we had with, um, John Morgan, and, you know, we were sort of. Floundering, having some of the same discussions over and over again about school capacity and stuff at our meetings and. Um, and John explained to us that you, you can't, you know, there's, there's certain. Um, things that you can and can't consider as a planning commission. Um, and we're, you know. John also said that, that our, our planning commission, the way that we're operating is sort of more like a zoning board than a, than a planning commission. These things come to us, and we have, we have, you know, state mandated. Things that we're allowed to consider based on our code and based on, on state law and. That, you know, that puts us in a position of, of feeling sometimes like we can't respond to, um. Community questions and concerns or our own concerns. I mean, I know, I know I feel that way, and I think a lot of us do. And so then the, the thing that, the, the, I think the thing that's tough about it is. The first thing that we get, you know, that's changing some of these, the, the code. Or whatever that the, that the community is, is having a hard time with is something that sounds like, sounds on its face like it might actually increase. Growth rather than, than give us a more dynamic way to respond to growth and respond to demand. And I, you know, I get that, I, I have the same concerns. I, I have my own vision for Estacada, and, and does it involve the place looking like. You know, Happy Valley or Gresham or Damascus? No, it, it didn't, but, you know, at, at the same time, I guess, um. I guess, I, I, this, this particular proposal, the thing that I like about this is that it, it is really the, the. Biggest thing I like about it is that it, it involves making. Affordable housing more, more buildable in this town. And, and. What, you know, I would be happy if not another, another house or apartment was ever built here, but. That's, that's just, you know, that's not the reality of, of what's happening. And, and I, I do think, you know. We have some existential questions as a planning commission to talk about, would it have been? Less scary to everyone if we were? All more actively involved in this process as it was going along? Would, would it be better if we were? More involved in. As a group and addressing some of our other concerns rather than just like. Being a thing, a body that meets and. Addresses proposals and says yea or nay. That's, that's a great, that's a great thing that we should. Be considering, but, you know, this. This particular thing, I, I thought, you know, Matt did a great job answering about why this isn't going to necessarily drastically increase. Housing, what it's, it's meant to make a certain kind of housing. More doable in town. So I, I, you know. I, I, I hear all the concerns and I have in myself, but. I, I do think that this, this proposal is. Ultimately, probably something that we really need.
Okay, so. Did you have anything more to say as?
I don't, I wonder Taylor has anything to add, just because she's your planning director.
Is she still there?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, okay.
Um, I would just. The one thing I wanted to add, um. There have been a few comments that, uh, made it sound like. This information was new, or maybe people want more time, um, felt like they, they needed more time to. Um. Process or, uh, read through the information, um, and concerns that the, that the, um. The proposal is not capturing what the, um. Estacada community wants, or, yeah, is not reflecting the preferences of the community. Um, so I just want to remind. Everybody about the really broad, um, and. In-depth public engagement that went into this proposal, um, including guidance and feedback from both the city council and. Um, the planning commission. We held a joint workshop that some of you attended. Um, all of you were invited to participate in the multiple, um, public open houses, the multiple public surveys. Um. You know, uh, the information about the housing needs analysis, the housing strategy project, um, and then. Lastly, these proposed amendments, um, have been available at least in draft form, um, for. A long time now. Um, and so, yeah, it, there is absolutely the option to, um. You know, continue this hearing if, if people feel like they need some more information, uh, more time to. Dig through the information that's here. Um, but I definitely just want to remind everybody that this, this, um. These amendments were developed. With extensive community input, so, um, it's not like this is, um. A complete departure from what the members of this community expressed wanting. That's all.
Okay, thanks. And the numbers, okay, here we go. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this applicant, application? If so, please approach your microphone and give your full name and address before speaking. This is in favor.
Favor.
Not, not it. Not against, it's in favor. Yeah. Okay. Does any member of this audience wish to speak?
He's speaking in favor.
Are you going in favor? Okay. So, so.
Hey, this is Michael Kerr. I already know a lot of you. Um, yes, and I'm certainly in favor of this. I, I have, um, I'm very grateful for. Uh, for what Tara said, um, I guess in that specifically, that it has, it, for me, it has nothing to do, it's completely different dynamic than the growth. Um, Mike, that you mentioned earlier, um, I've had people on my doorstep begging me as soon as I mentioned it was going to do rentals. Begging and crying, shedding tears for, to be able to live in, um, put their name down for apartments that are not even, or not even apartments, but units that haven't even been built yet. Um, I'm an employer here in Estacada, and I employ. Several different, um, of my employees are here from Estacada, and I've not, not seen that we're actually. That this, this proposal is not in any way, um, uh, a function. Of its growth of Estacada, as much as it's filling a need, which is, which is critical at this point, because there are, there is an enormous, um, hole. In, what do you call it, secondary or. Multi, right, secondary, um. Residents.
Middle, middle housing.
Yeah, there you go, secondary housing, sorry. And at the, at the moment, I guess I've got some, um, some ideas, and I've been really excited and eagerly anticipating. Your guys' consideration on this, but I did have two questions as well, and I don't know if that's okay to.
Yeah.
Is it, is it Kevin? Is that right? I'm so sorry.
Matt.
Matt. I just was wondering about the distinction of the, um, lot sizes between ADUs. And, um, when you talk about duplex, triplex, and whenever. Whatnot, there's a twenty-five hundred. Square foot lot size, and if that's distinguished from ADUs being with the same consideration, both for that and for parking, or if those are different. That make sense?
Get into that.
Yeah, thanks.
So. Currently, um, the city complies with the state law, which says that, um, you have to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit with every single family home. Um, and that you cannot apply a minimum lot size requirement to the, um, to the ADU. So. If you have an existing home on, say, a four thousand square foot lot that doesn't meet the, the minimum lot size in the zone, you could, you still need to allow, um, an accessory dwelling unit on that lot. So the twenty-five hundred square feet, um, per unit, that would just apply to, um, middle housing types like duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes and. Um, other, other types.
I guess the conception of the problem, there might be a triplex with an ADU or something like that.
Right, that is, that's a good point. Yeah, Estacada actually kind of goes above and beyond the state requirements and does allow accessory dwelling units with. Say a duplex or a tri, a triplex as well. Um, and. Same there. I mean, there's, there's nothing in the current code that requires a minimum lot size for, um, to, to allow the sighting of that accessory dwelling unit.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you so much. That was just a big question for me. I do feel very supported. Um, and I guess I feel like I'm, I, I'm grateful to be in Estacada, in a place where I can see that, um, I feel supported by the planning commission. Here, um, there was one other last question, the, the, the distinction between. The mill area north Estacada, is there an official map of where those classifications and designations are? Is that? Not the one that we saw before, which is a zoning map, correct?
Oh. Well, yeah, those are identified on the zoning map. Those are, those are the land use districts that are on the zoning.
Districts themselves, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
I have one question. What did you just answer to for him?
Oh, the answer to the, um, that type of housing is called middle housing.
Okay, I, I didn't hear what you. Okay, I didn't hear what you said, that's why. Okay, anybody else for? Nobody's moving. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposed of this application? If so, please approach your microphone and give your full name and address before speaking.
My name is Shirley Burke. I live at ten twenty-five Northwest Casablanca Court, Estacada, Oregon. I live behind Campanella's estate. Okay, Campanella's Estates, when they came in there, they were. It was section forty-nine, the city hooked it into town. And so they started building houses, where they built two-story houses. That face our property, which we ended up having to go and buy new curtains, new drapes. Put a fence up two and a half feet taller, so we didn't have to look into their windows and they didn't look into ours. Okay, as far as um building homes because it's affordable, whatever. Okay, how about the streets? The streets have not been enlarged. I mean, when school's on, we live, we, it takes us five to ten minutes just to get out of the court. Because the traffic, roads are narrow. And then wait, uh, Wade Creek or Eagle Creek Highway. It's just a complete zoo. I mean, the traffic is supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour. They come to that thirty miles an hour, and then they park on the sides by the schools, the school buses can't get in or out. You know, I mean, it's nice to have a big new town, but this town is growing way too fast. I mean, that's an average of two to six wrecks between here and Carver every day because of the traffic from and out of Estacada. And so, you know, fine, you guys need to slow down until you get your roads fixed, but stoplights like at River Mill. Which was in that industrial area, and that was put in there, that was a agreement, there would be stoplights once those big trucks. Started coming in and out, they're not there. I mean, the trucks pull out. Most of them are really considerate, but we have a few that come pulling out in front of all that traffic. And that's been, I think, three or four wrecks in the last three months of River Mill and two twenty-four. And that never happened before. So, you know, I think. It's just building way too much, and as far as the lot sizes, I mean, we call Campanella's Reach Out and Touch Me. And now, and uh, it's just, they're too close and fall down. Two years ago, one house like that caught on fire in a development like that, it took twelve other houses. The houses and to make them smaller yet, from twenty to fifteen is just ridiculous. They need to be, I, I mean, they don't even have, if they have kids in Campanella's, they don't even have any player in their yards to play in. And so, but, I mean, we've got where we're just thinking about selling our house and moving. I mean, we we could sell our house right now on the spot, but we love Estacada. We just want to slow down and slow down and watch, see what's going on. We don't need. I mean, you call affordable housing, okay, affordable housing. How many new houses or new rentals are under a thousand dollars a month? You can even, you get a one, you get a room in this town, seven, eight hundred dollars for just a room alone. This is ridiculous. If it's affordable housing, it should be affordable housing. Not anywhere from any landlord to make money. As far as Lake Shore is concerned, I know what Dee's talking about. Because it's good, it looks like slumlord, slumlord down there because all these houses are empty and not taken care of. So, I think we should hold off on this proposal and think it out and, you know, talk about it more. Thank you.
Anyone else? Or against it? No? Okay, I'm seeing nobody else getting up. Does anybody want to? Any member of that is? Is a neutral wish to speak? Okay, um. I see nobody moving. Does the staff have any more additional comments or responsive responses to the public statements?
Um, I don't have any responses to the public statements. Um, I, the last comment I'll say is that just a reminder of the. Slide that I pulled up on my presentation at the beginning here. Um, the planning commission's role tonight is to issue a recommendation to the city council. One of the um. Development code criteria that was listed on that screen, and Alan, if you want to pull it up, feel free, but it's um. Estacada Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen point one-two-eight point zero-two-zero Amendment Procedure. This is in, this is a legislative amendment, so um. Proceedings initiated by the city council like this project shall be by resolution and shall be referred first to the planning commission, so that's you all. The commission shall make a recommendation on the coun- to the council upon completion, completion of a public hearing, what we're doing right now. The planning commission and then city council shall adopt findings to establish. That the legislative amendment will not conflict with other provisions of the development code or with the comprehensive plan. So, um, your recommendation. Will need to identify if it's if it's a recommended approval, agreeing with the findings. Um, in the staff report, then you don't need to specify any changes because we've already made findings. Um, that the amendments do not conflict with other provisions of the code or comp plan. If you want to make any changes to the findings that are um in the staff report. Um, and especially if you are wanting to recommend denial, then we staff, in order to document those findings. We need to know which provisions of the code and comprehensive plan um or statewide planning goals which apply. Which provisions are not being met that would support that denial.
Okay, that's it, okay. Okay, at this time I would ask for a motion and second, to close, close or continue the public hearing. You have a motion to close it, on second?
I'll second it.
Good, then move to second it. Okay, all in favor? This is, yes, all right. Anybody? Anybody doesn't want the end? Okay. I will open the planning commission meeting and ask for a motion to approve, approve. Or conditions to deny. The applicant at. Yeah, that's. Okay, I will open, open, reopen the planning commission meeting to ask for a motion to approve. Approval with conditions or deny the application.
Can you speak into the mic?
Thank you, Tracy. Working out of town for the last thirteen months, I have not been able to do all that I'd like to do with this. You guys have done a great job. I'm sure it costs a lot of time and money. Without having personally read it, listened to it tonight, I looked at a lot of it. I'd still like to read this before I could give you an approval or deny. I don't want to do either one tonight. So, with that.
Will you bring the motion up or not?
Oh, heck no. I wasn't here, I I'm not qualified to make it.
You got, you got three choices.
I got one more, we could hold one more public hearing.
Well, you got approval, approval with conditions, or deny.
Just, just for point of discussion or or absurd point of order, I guess. I don't even, I can't really tell from Zoom how many people are here. Um, do, would we even have enough people to approve that? I just like, don't, I don't really. Know if we would be able to prove it if there's somebody that's not.
Everybody, everybody's here, everybody's here except for Ben, and I'm replacing him.
We couldn't have a meeting, we couldn't have a meeting if we didn't have a quorum, so.
That makes sense, I guess, yeah. Um, yeah, I I.
Okay, we're still waiting for a motion. Do we just send it without one? To the ci- to the city council? I wish I could vote, but I can't.
You can't make the motion.
I can't make a motion.
Wait, why, oh, okay.
Can you repeat the conditions that you were talking about?
Taylor?
Yeah, I can.
Taylor was talking about conditions.
Um, yeah, findings, um, so the the commission. Shall make a recommendation, the planning commission shall make a recommendation to the council. Uh, da-da-da-da, the next, uh, the planning commission shall adopt findings to establish that. The legislative amendment, this ordinance, will not conflict with other provisions of the development code. Or the comprehensive plan. So the provisions of the development code or comprehensive plan. Um, that apply to this ordinance, those are all of the approval criteria that are listed out. In the staff report, so the staff report goes through all uh fourteen of the statewide planning goals. Which apply, goes through all um of the comprehensive plan. Policies that apply to this proposal and then goes through the development code. Rules that apply to these amendments. Um, and so if the, if the planning commission is going to. Recommend a denial, um, we need to document. What is the basis for that denial? What approval criteria are failing to be um demonstrated as met?
That's what, what happens if we put it on hold? Can we do that?
So, um, hang on one second, why am I getting a phone call? Um, there is, the code does specify how the planning commission can recess a hearing. Um, so the planning commission or city council may recess a hearing in order to obtain additional information. Or to serve further notice upon other property owners, um, that that's different. Um, upon recessing, the time and date when the hearing is to be resumed shall be announced and no additional publications necessary. Um, so. Let's see if there, I just want to see if there's anything else that it says. Related to continuing a hearing, and I don't think that it does. So, the planning commission may, the important thing here is that you may recess this hearing. So continue it to a later date, we need to establish what that date is. Um, in order to obtain additional information. Um, so I think at that point, we would need to know what additional information is um is needed.
Firstly, I think that there's a lot of information here and it takes a while to digest some of it or a lot of it. And I think there are people here that are uncomfortable with the fact that they picked it up, you know, fairly recently. Uh, I myself would like to go back over it again. I highlighted and made notes throughout it. I spent probably six hours reading that, going through it, trying to, you know, assimilate it. So that I could understand it, but uh, I think it needs to be, there are people here that need to think about this.
Thanks for coming. No. No, we're closing the public here.
This would be from the city council standpoint.
Can we, can we do that? The audience can't do it, so, and really, he's an audience. I know, I know who he is, so, but.
Sorry, what's going on?
This is Paul.
Taylor, is Paul able to speak as a member, as a liaison from the city council?
Um, I think it, I I don't know that our code specifies that or if that's something that we would. Know, you know, we would go by Robert's rules or something, but um I think it's probably a good idea to. Let him say whatever he's going to say, and I would also ask, unless anyone wants this on the screen still, um, can you unshare your screen, Alan?
Yes.
Helps if I can see who's talking, thanks.
Okay, not knocking you at all, and I, I guess I think, but I disagree with this.
Can we reopen the public comments?
I think we could really, would really benefit from some more, I mean, you know.
I I felt it'd be more appropriate to not speak during the public, considering that I was involved in the. Uh, this whole process as well too. So I I just wanted to say, this is, this is our opportunity. To take a long-term look at how we're shaping Estacada, what we're looking at changing here, what we're proposing. Is not uh. Stuff we want to make, we're we're expecting to make an immediate impact on the city. This is long-term, how we're gonna uh appropriately. Define how we're going to use the property within the urban growth boundary. And ultimately, what we were looking at is the housing needs analysis says that there's a need for more affordable housing. More middle market housing, and this is a solution to do that, to allow more, to reduce some of the barriers. To allow more middle market or middle housing in Estacada. Um, what what we are going through tonight. It it's the culmination of of quite a bit of work that the council's been involved in, that the city's been involved in, that the community has been involved in as well too. We've had open houses, we've had opportunities for folks to come and participate. We, this, this is the result of all that. So this is nothing that we feel like we're we're we're. Putting on you folks to make a decision on. This is stuff that we've been working on for quite a long time and and whatever proposals come through. This is, council's well aware of what we're talking tonight about. There, we're aware of the setbacks. This is stuff that we've negotiated, that we've worked through as well too. What we are working through tonight or what the purpose and intent, as Taylor had said, is does the the proposals meet the criteria? And I think Taylor, you could probably say it better than I could, but do the proposals meet the criteria? Um, that they're set forth by the state law, by the comprehensive plan and so forth. That's what we're looking for tonight.
I'm kind of, kind of curious why we're even being involved if city council has already um created the plan. And basically ready to buy it off. What, what is our function here as planning commissioners?
And Taylor, maybe you can help on this, but my understanding from a planning commission standpoint is, and because we, we've had joint workshops with the planning commission on this.
I'm looking at this up, I don't see.
Well, you know.
I went to that, I mean.
I, I went to a earlier meeting about this and the planning commissioners were invited. So I I logged on, but I wasn't allowed to make any comments because it wasn't a. We, even though planning commission was invited, we weren't allowed to make comments because it was a city council meeting. And, you know, I.
There have been some council brief, there have been council briefings that we have notified. All of the other committees about and invited folks to listen in on, those are just council specific, no one else would be allowed to participate since it's just for the council. There was also the joint planning commission and city council meeting, and then there were the multiple um. Public uh events that were held. Um, and surveys that went out to gather feedback that you all were invited to participate in.
Again, I'm I'm not sure wh- what our role here is tonight, if it's already been decided how this is going to go.
The role tonight, as I understand it, would be to make sure that this meets the criteria that is set forth. Okay.
Can you speak into a mic? Is someone? Can you speak into a mic, is someone talking?
Yeah.
Richard Harder, please.
Yeah.
Restate that. Being that I'm on Johnny come lately tonight, this is the first time I've seen this proposal, and I'd like to kinda read it before I gave a particular yea or nay on it. But if you're in a hurry, it'll be a nay. Is it any more simple than that?
So, so, since we aren't going by rules, I, I move to continue this meeting. Nobody else is going to do it, let's see what happens here.
I'll move that we continue the meeting, you can't make that motion.
Well, we're making, changing the rules, I made a motion, go. We need a second, we got a second. We got a second, okay.
All right, sorry, so we're voting on something that is not the actual proposal?
We, we, we're voting on to continue this hearing so we can get more information.
And I'll, I'll remind you.
And some of us can catch up.
And I'll, yeah, so I'll remind you, the continuing a hearing can be in order to obtain additional information, so we'll, we will need to know what that is. Um, and then we will also need to determine what date we are continuing the hearing to.
Okay, it had been seconded, it had been moved to seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? No?
I, I guess I'd rather just vote on the motion itself, but I, I don't know.
I call for a vote for the motion. Yes, you can.
Do you have a date?
Oh, I don't know about the other planning staff, but what, what, what are your agenda for next one?
Well, we got two meetings this month. We got a long one, like on the thirteenth or something like that, fifteen something. What?
Can you talk into a mic, Tracy?
Sorry, I just asked them to specify a date they wanted to continue it to, and we're looking, I guess, for planning staff to tell us which of your upcoming meetings that they should continue that to. Based on your agendas.
Well, this will, um, maybe depend also on the consultant's availability, but we could, um, add this to the September twenty-second meeting.
It's a yes or no, I, I see this, so.
I am not, well, I might be, I, I would be available remotely, um, just not in person. Probably in sisters at a planning commission meeting in that community on that same night in person, so, um, I'd be available remotely, just not, uh, in person.
I, I could be available. So you would continue it to September twenty-second at seven PM?
So.
So if you could amend your motions in your second.
So let's, let's keep talking, let's see if we can get them both here. You can't be in the twenty-first.
I can, I can participate, I just won't be here in person. But I can be here, like Taylor's on the screen.
We have a planning, another planning commission meeting on the sixteenth, how full is that?
You have one on the fifteenth that is, um, I can't remember if there, there are at least two other items on that meeting, agenda. Um, on the twenty-second, there's only one item on the twenty-second, which will be the marijuana amendments that you recently also continued. Oh my God, it, we cannot discuss this on the same night as marijuana, please. I, I, can, I mean, can we, are, are we in a place where we can vote on it? What, what's, I've just, what's going on?
Right now, we have a motion and a second, so we gotta.
Someone could make a motion to approve or deny. It, it, now's the time to make any motion.
We have a motion on the table, so that motion needs to be withdrawn.
Okay, so if we go to the thirteenth, you can make it. The fifteenth, whatever.
On the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, right. Okay, well, we, our meetings are the twenty-second, so we should all be there. So, and, so if we set, set this in with the twenty-second, if it passes, is that what you want? Yes.
I'm not sure, I'm a little confused here, um, since it's my first night. There's been, there's been reports since July twenty-twenty-one. I don't understand, this has been revised a couple of times, and I don't understand why we need more information. I've, I've read it all myself. If it's been out there for over a year, what more information are you gonna get?
Let's go ahead and call for the votes here. What, the worst you can do is tie it. Pass and fail, whatever. We can do anything. Let's call for the vote, it's twenty-second. Let's see if it, it passes, if it doesn't, I mean.
So this, this motion is to continue this meeting till September twenty-second at seven PM.
Right.
This, this is yea or nay if you're in favor, Commissioner Brittle?
Nay.
Commissioner Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Ennis?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Nay.
Commissioner Hartwig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sager?
Yes.
Passed.
Well, it passed for the three. So we're having, we have another long meeting on the twenty-second. What? Over to you, okay. Oh, that's right, he's not here. Okay. Okay, let's see. I do, I would direct the city staff to prepare the findings and also direct this. Uh-huh, okay, I would direct the commission to get the, all of the questions that you may have and get them to.
So I, I think we need to know those questions, um, now. Um, in order to.
Put it out now?
What, excuse, what?
How are you gonna do it now?
But we need to know what additional information you have just voted to continue this hearing in order for us to obtain for you.
Taylor? Taylor? Ms. Richard Hartwig? I want to take this present draft home, and I want to read it in full. I have not had that opportunity in a year. So there's the information I need is to read it so I know what we're talking about. And then, what I like, I'll approve it. And if there's questions, I'll bring them to you before the meeting, and you can get me any information that might be germane.
And the other. The other commissioners who voted to continue to obtain more information?
Well, I'd, I'd personally like to know how much additional acceleration and growth that, uh, making all of these, uh, changes to, to, you know, our, our codes is going to create, and, um, it can be a, a, a number, it can be a percentage. I'm, versus what we think our projected growth currently is without making any changes. That's my question.
Well, mine.
You know, it's all, who do we want to be when we grow up? And that's going to be determined, I think, by, um, the, the changes that are either made or not made, um, in this proposal.
Good, by doing this, what do we do in the city council? You, you had that scheduled, right?
Yeah, we're gonna have to let the city council know that their hearing, which is currently scheduled for September twenty-sixth, I guess it's, it's possible that they could keep their hearing on that date, if you all, um, issue your recommendation on September twenty-second. Um, otherwise, we'll have to, uh, push their hearing date back to sometime in October.
So. Is that, that, is that what we're doing? Okay. Taylor, do we need anything else from you?
I don't think so.
Except for more information, right?
There's a lot of information, I just want to say, there's a lot, there's a lot of information, and it, it's, you know, it's kinda up to us to read it or not, I mean, if there's very specific questions, that's one thing, but there is a, a shitload of information here.
Hold on.
Excuse me for saying that, whoops.
I, I, I'm still not sure what the planning commission is doing here, if it's, uh, already been vetted by city council.
I, I kinda agree with that.
I would not characterize it as already having been vetted. Um, they have not done any formal review of this proposal against the statewide planning goals and the comprehensive plan goals, um, which is a requirement for approving development code and, um, comp plan amendments. Those statewide planning goals and comprehensive plan goals are not, um, objective. That is a subjective type of review, and so that's one of the, one of the things that, um, takes a commission or a committee or a council, um, to make a decision on, because it's not objective. Um, those goals are, um, yeah, there's, there's subjectivity there. So that's your job, is, is to look at these amendments and say, does this align with the goals that we have in our comprehensive plan?
Taylor? When does the city council do that?
The city council is scheduled to do that currently on September twenty-sixth. We will have to, um, we'll have to figure out whether or not that's enough time from your continued hearing date of September twenty-second. If there are substantial changes to, um, the findings and recommendation, then staff will need time to make those changing, changes. Um, so we're, I'm not sure whether we'll be able to keep their September twenty-sixth hearing date.
So it's being, it's, this is Tom. Um, now, this kid keeps on being, said that the city council worked on this and worked on this in their meetings, and one of the planners said that he, he couldn't get into that meeting, but if it's supposed to be.
I got in, I just couldn't make any comments.
Right, he couldn't make any comments. So, um, I'm looking back at, at all your guys' emails, and I, and I did finally find one, but it was only half the size of this thing. So, you know, and it was from, from, looks like.
Yeah, we would have sent out, um, different iterations, different drafts of the various materials um, and reports that went into this whole thing. It would not have been this entire packet, because this entire packet is putting all of that together with the staff report, with the ordinance, with the draft, um, amendment text documents that are huge. Um, but earlier reports went out to you, we have the buildable lands inventory, the housing needs analysis, those were both completed, those reports were um, basically completed, um, back in twenty-twenty-one. The housing strategies report, the first, um, iteration of that document was like a, a, a menu of potential housing strategies that went out, I think as a memo, um, then that built into a larger report after we got more feedback from stakeholders and the public. Um, so there are, there are definitely gonna be plenty of emails containing, um, parts of the packet that you now have in front of you, and earlier drafts of those parts of the packet. But you wouldn't have gotten this entire packet altogether until just now, um, you know, a couple of, uh, I guess the packet went out a week before the hearing. Because those draft amendments weren't drafted up until we had all of those, um, other reports done.
So I got, I got one. I put it, cause I put it away, oh, here it is. I got one and I printed it out, and that's this one here. And then, that, that was on, like, the twenty-sixth, and then I can't find dates, and then a couple days later, I got another one. And that's all I've combined here. So, you know, then, I'm, I'd be the first to admit, I am not a fan of these things. So. So anyway, so what's up, what do we do? So we're gonna get that stuff to her, we're gonna have the meeting the twenty-second. You can gun. Please. Um, other than that, I call, unless we have anything else going, I call this meeting.
I will, I, I'd like to clarify, um, if you all have additional questions that you need us to answer before the next hearing, we need to receive them by Monday, no later than the end of the day on Monday. The only question that I have written down right now that we have on our list of additional information to get to you, if, if we can, um, is how much additional growth can we expect, um, if we make these proposed changes? So if there are other questions, we need them by the end of the day on Monday.
Monday, the twenty-ninth?
The twenty-ninth.
I'd like to make a comment. Matt, didn't you already answer that question? Uh, regarding approximately ten percent?
I answered in the, in that, um, I wouldn't predict that you're gonna see new growth as a result of these. And then I also said that most of these amendments are related to either middle housing types, and the proportion of future growth of middle housing of your total growth is ten percent. So, you know, I, and, and whether or not these amendments actually generate all of that, I mean, that's projected regardless, it's just part of the estimated future households here, so, um, I did my best to answer it to the extent I haven't answered tonight. Um, you know, we could write something up a little further. You guys have already continued the hearing, I'll, I'll answer that question to the extent I can. Um, I still might not have, I'll just say I might not have a definitive answer for you, because it's a pretty hard thing to answer definitively. I don't have a great crystal ball, but I will say it's not gonna be a big number, um, if that's the question, so. But I, 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 yeah. Sorry. I tried to.
No, that was fine, thank you.
Yeah.
The sigh wasn't for you. It was just absorbing it.
Okay. I I move to close this meeting.